Welcome and thank you for coming this evening. Welcome to the regular and executive session of the City Council. It's 6:30 Tuesday, July 14th, 2020. Please welcome Lance Gary from First Baptist for our invocation. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Let's pray. Our Father, we want to come before you this evening to lift up our country, our state, our county, our city, and those affected by this pandemic. We pray that those who are ill would be recovering. We pray for the families who are worried and being in contact with those who are ill and for the, just the general worry and the spread of the pandemic. We just pray that you would please put this to rest. Help us to put our trust in you as we do this. We pray for tonight's meeting. We pray for wisdom, for guidance, and for peace as we work together to bring this community together and progress it forward. We thank you in Christ's name. Amen.
Thank you.
I'd like to call the meeting to order and let the record indicate that all are present except for our fine mayor, Paul Pascal. Matt Tiscus, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure. If you're able to stand, would you join me, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Thank you.
Mr. Hottop, do we have any items of community interest?
I have none.
Council members, any?
I've got, I've got one. The Weatherford Chamber of Commerce this week has Peach Week going on around town, and there are a number of businesses that have peachy treats and different activities taking place. And it's a great time to get out and support our local businesses and yet still maintain social distancing and following all the proper protocols for that. And so just want to encourage our citizens who haven't participated in that to check it out. There's a scavenger hunt that's available, and it's just a great opportunity to support our community. So check out Peach Week.
Awesome. Hope everyone can come and enjoy those activities. Consent agenda items, can we review them all as one or does anyone have one they want to take off?
All as one.
Can I have a motion? I have a motion from Jeff Robinson and a second from Kevin Cleveland. If you would vote now. That passes unanimously, four zero. Next item, wow, went through that pretty quick, didn't we? Is a public hearing. Hold a public hearing and consider approval of ordinance 02020-35, a request for a conditional use permit for an automotive wash located at 701 Fort Worth Highway, being a 1.007 acre tract of land defined as parts of lot 6 and 7, block 001, Old Fairgrounds Edition, City of Weatherford, Parker County, Texas, CUP 2020-005. Mr. Kettner?
Yes. Counsel, we have before you this request for a conditional use permit that did go before the Planning Commission at their last meeting that was held on July 8th of 2020. This request initially came to staff and the application that was received and reviewed and was recommended by staff with a recommendation of denial based on the two factors outlined in the staff report, which the, the first item on that had to do with the vacuums being located in the front of the property, which was parallel to the street and which is what staff interpretation and review of the current understandings of the directions to dimsize automobile uses and excessive cars along the US 180 corridor. And the applicant has proposed 41 vacuums with a site with 11 located in the front of the building, parallel with Highway 180. The second reasoning for staff's recommendation had to do with the corridor, 180 corridor vision plan, which outlines a plan to enhance and maintain Weatherford's Western heritage to incorporate historic significance and its cultural identity and embellish Americana qualities. Staff did not interpret that theme car wash as meaning those qualities and goals, in particularly two, two items located on that, which would be a pirate ship located in front and a fountain that was also located on that. The property, as shown in your packet, is located here off of Fort Worth Highway. This is the site plan that was submitted, and this went before the Planning Commission at their July 8th, 2020 meeting, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval 70 of the conditional use permit with the following conditions. One, adequate parking for office spaces and car wash in accordance with Section 12-54 of the zoning regulations. Item two, that signage and fountain should not distract from Weatherford's Western heritage. Item three is that the vacuums in front will not have canopies and will be painted a non-intrusive color. And item four, that the removal of the existing pole sign and freestanding signs and restrict signage to a monument sign, not exceed 35 feet in height, and signage associated with the new development are well-designed and should be appropriate for the corridor. And you have the, as you see in the, the vacuums will be the above head style that showcased on the site plan, and it will be located parallel to the plan. The existing, it's an existing car wash that has been there and they will be refurbishing it to what you see in the plans and in your packet that was provided to you. The applicants are here and they do have a presentation that they would like to share with you, and I'd be glad to answer questions after, after their presentation if you'd like.
We can go that route. Is that okay with you, counsel?
Great.
Okay. I believe the first person who would like to speak is Steve Stalard. Hope I got that correctly. If you would state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Steve Stalard, and my address is 9292 Huntington Square, North Fitchland Hills. And I live in Tarrant County, of course. I'm the owner of Express Wash America. We own and operate car washes and have for well over 15 years. We've owned 15 washes in various cities across three states, and we feel thrilled just to be here in Weatherford. This is, this is a great community. 20 years from now, this is, this, this community will have grown significantly, and we plan to be a part of that growth. We purchased a site in 2017, just for real quick information. We've done a few things since then. We actually removed the oil facility, the lube facility. We also removed the canopy and the underground tanks and got all those certified, so everything's in good shape there. We, we plan to build a wash there under the Pirate Falls theme, and this is a car wash that I think you can all be proud of from a real estate standpoint. It's not the old style car washes that are like the self-serve's you think about rundown, maintenance problems, crime problems, security problems, lighting problems. This is going to be a building, as you see, it's very bright. It will handle, it can handle well over 1,000 cars a day. It will have 40 vacuums. Those vacuums are free, serves well the community, and we think it will do real well there on Fort Worth Highway. My company has washed over 4 million cars since 2016, and we were recently nominated for Car Wash of the Year in Amarillo. As I said, this is not the old car wash model. I think, I think this is what we call an express or a hybrid model. People stay in their cars, so they'll come up, actually purchase a wash. You can stay in your car, or you can actually purchase additional services to have your interiors cleaned, for instance, and then you get out and let us clean and you'll wait for a little bit. So we can do both, and so we think it's, it's a real service to the community. The issues that have come up in the past, and particularly with the planning and zoning, I just want to address real quick. We are proposing vacuums in the front. We think that's very important for a retailer to have a presence in front so that as people drive by, they'll know what, what our business does. And I threw out the example at the P&amp;Z meeting that the retailers that have put, for instance, gasoline pumps in the back have failed miserably because people just can't envision what kind of a business it is. We plan to make these, these vacuums in front very good to the eyes. I mean, they're not going to, they're not going to be the old stainless canisters. They'll be, they'll be, for instance, the, the vacuums that you saw there in the picture, and we think they'll be done nicely, and it should be, it should be a nice articulation for that property. The other issue, well, we do have, it was asked how many, why we have so many vacuums. All these vacuums are going to be free. That drives business. There'll be over 40 vacuums there. That again is just good business, but it's also good for the community. You don't have to wait for vax, almost certainly. You'll be able to get in there at any time. We also do a lot of fundraising in our, in our car washes. We believe in getting involved in the community, and so for instance, in some of our other washes, we get with local school organizations, cheerleading groups, even soccer teams and so on, and we'll actually hold car washes on Saturday and get the kids out there. It's a community thing, and we actually donate a portion of proceeds to that, whatever organization it is, whether it be a school or other civic organization. Those, that's just part of our marketing plan. It's really good for our business too because it gets people into our wash, and that's what we want. So, any questions?
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I also have Craig Farmer. If you could state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Protim and members of the council. Craig Farmer, I reside at 321 West Oak Street here in Weatherford, Texas. I am an urban planner with Municipal Planning Services LLC, and I'm working on this project. I think most people are familiar with what it looked like. We just want to point out that it used to have gas pumps and an auto lube in front, plus parking in front. That's all being removed. They have occupied the building continuously with an office in there working on the plans and are moving forward. You saw the elevations. The plans have been submitted to the city, and they're about ready for a building permit, subject to what happens here tonight. This is an example of what they've done other places. That's a remodel. They do good work. Issue number one, vacuums in front of the building. Just real quickly, there's the 11 vacuums. My document was wrong. This is what everybody was afraid of when we made our original recommendations, and that's the new style. You just approved one down on Santa Fe with their CUP, but it does have canopies. The applicant's not proposing them because it would be in the way of the building, but that gives you an idea of the scale of the ones in the front. And again, most of the activity's in the back. All the exiting from the car wash itself is to the rear, so when you come out and you vacuum, it'll be in the back. So the front ones really are for promotion. Fundraisers, he's talked about. The sign itself, there was a condition at P&amp;Z. We'd like to modify that a little bit just to say that if they can make this sign work, turn it into a monument sign, they wouldn't have to tear it down, but it would have to become a monument sign and meet the requirements of the city. Issue number two is the automobile uses. That's been a continuing issue. We had a lot of debate on the used car lot zoning case. This is what got built in lieu of the used car lot there. But the plan itself talks about auto lots, auto lubrication, vehicle repair, large amounts of parking, vehicle sales in front of buildings. So it doesn't necessarily say no auto uses, but it doesn't want the large amount of space in front tied up in parking, those sorts of things. Issue number three is the Western heritage, was both the general plan and the corridor plan. The recommendation in the corridor plan is that it be a Western heritage, prairie or hill country vernacular. So this is the example in the plan. Their architect, who's also done one of the other buildings, let me show you, tried to mimic the existing buildings in the area, plus the samples in the plan, notice the awnings, the articulation, the brick. The stripes up the street has similar awnings, similar articulation. Enterprise couldn't quite get there because it's an existing building, but they, they did quite a bit of work there. Also in that zone three in the corridor, there's a number of things there in addition to the Western heritage, and the slide inside talks about how they address all of those. Two that I want to point out is the question came about lighting. The lighting is on the booms themselves in the back. It's not up in the air, plus there's trees, so there shouldn't be any, any lighting going over from the area. And the other thing was the traffic, those exits right there, the top end, the closest driveways are entrances only. So there should be plenty of stacking for traffic. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Counsel, do you have any questions? Thank you very much. And Mr. Greg Willis?
He's just available for questions if there are.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Jim Eggleston, please state your name and address.
Can I speak without it?
I think you need to leave it on.
You want me to leave it on? Okay. It doesn't make me any quieter, however. I can speak through it. I am here, obviously, for the applicant to finish up with just a couple of things. You know, I start and stop almost every speech around here with economic development, and so if you look at the picture, and it is not up there, so I don't know what that means if I've done something wrong. There we go. That's what the redevelopment possibilities are all up and down the corridor. And so the applicant has come in with a plan that you've already seen. The businesses on the corridor are facing a lot of challenges. They all compete with I-20. So taking the vacuum as just an example, I think my perspective is we need to enhance and help promote these businesses to be able to effectively compete with what's on I-20. The unattractive areas, as you see there, and as continue, surround of property. And so I think when you lay that, and of course, that building's been taken down, it's vacant today, it will have a new structure, which will be very helpful over there. So let me go to the conditions that were discussed the other night. We got a 7-0 vote at P&amp;Z that came along with four, with these four items. Red is what we added. Actually, we clarified them verbally at the end of P&amp;Z, but the signage and fountain would not distract from Weatherford's Western heritage. We're fine with that, subject to our ability to continue to use the logo and theme of the Pirate Falls and the water and that sort of thing. My argument is Pirates of the Caribbean and Johnny Depp, that's about as Americana as it gets the last couple of years, but. And then the vacuums, a non-intrusive color. The vacuums actually are powder coated in the color that they're going to be used, and they will be fit in and match with the decor and trim of the building, and so therefore to back up and turn them into something else would actually be more intrusive than going with the powder coating that come. And then of course, as Craig already mentioned, the freestanding sign will be wrapped in stone and masonry in order to make it a very beautiful and conforming sign. So back to economic development. Their proposal will be 25 full-time jobs with over $1 million of salary. This is the first item in a new branded logo chain, so it will be their corporate headquarters, so it will also bring people that are training into that facility. And again, finally, the community benefit, Craig touched on it, but a key part of their marketing is what they call fundraising, and F-U-N, fun. So that is, they have schools and different facilities, different charitable organizations come by, and they dedicate a portion to each car and dedicate a portion of the profits for that given day back to that charity. And so of course, having the vacuums, if you will, it seems small, but having the vacuums out front is critical to helping that charity. And I guess the last thing, and I lost my last.
You missed that one.
It's gone. My time is gone. Is basically look around what's there and what we've got, and which one do we want to move forward with? Thank you very much.
Thank you. That is all the cards I have. Would it be okay with counsel if we opened the public hearing?
Sure.
Let's open the public hearing for anybody who would like to discuss something on this autumn. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to discuss on this autumn? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, and counsel? Jeff, why don't you start?
I don't have an issue with, with the car wash being there. I think that, that the presentation has kind of covered some of my concerns, is that we have a lot of very old, ran-down buildings that are in need of some repair, and if we get a very nice looking building that is well-maintained, well landscaped, and taken care of, I don't have an issue with having a car wash there. A bunch of used car lots up and down the street and note lots and things like that are what, to me, is undesirable, and there's been a continual turn of people that haven't invested and kept the properties looking nice, and it's made the entryway into downtown from Fort Worth Highway look pretty, pretty rough. And I don't have an issue. I like the fact that we want to have a monument sign that is not a big tall pole sign. I listened to the P&amp;Z, and the request that was made is that we have earth toned vacuums. I can be supportive of that, but again, if they're new, nicely painted, taken care of, kept clean, which we're not really the police on that, but I don't have a big issue with it. I think that most of the vacuums being in the rear is where most of the use is going to be. I personally think that when it's a big long building like that and it says car wash, that it would probably do fine without having vacuums out front myself, but I don't have a, a big issue with them being there. So I guess what I'm saying is that I don't have major heartburn. The four, can we get the slide back that showed the, what the applicant's request were on the four? Had the red lines? Okay. The logo, I mean, the fact that our general plan and, and the corridor plan talks about Western heritage, I don't believe that, that a pirate ship fits it, but if that's a sign on the building, I mean, it's hard to restrict what somebody names or brands their business as long as we don't go too far. So, you know, that's something that I think there's, that I'm open to discuss, to hear how we can not, not go too far with, and have like a theme park out there, but you know, not be restrictive on what somebody names or labels their, their business. So with that, I'll let somebody else.
Kevin?
Monument sign, okay.
So I put a lot of thought in this today too, and Heidi, me and you have both been a voice about what's going on in the past with that corridor and what was intended, and I think we've been around for a while and we've all kind of heard what the concerns were for the corridor, and a lot of it was circled around automobile lots. And we've talked a couple of times as a group about whether it was particular uses that were problematic, or if it was particular things that those uses brought in. And I keep coming back to it's the items that some of those bring in, it's not particularly the use. So it's, it's the stagnant cars sitting out front. It's being able to go out to an auction and buy a bunch of $500 cars and stack them up on the front lot, and they don't move, and they sit there for a long time. It's light pollution from required security at some facilities to keep it, you know, safe at night that disturb the area. It's a lot of the advertising that comes with some of those type places that clutter up. Those are the kind of things, and this, you know, one of the problems I think we have with this is we're a little bit ahead of ourselves with our meeting that we're having in the next month to really define that. And so I think if this was coming a month from now, two months from now, we would have a real clear picture, and we wouldn't have to put a lot of thought into it. But because of the timing, I think we have to put a little thought into it. For me, I don't think that saying a car wash doesn't necessarily fit is the way I see it. I think there's potential to allow for a car wash to fit there. I do think there's some things that we need to work on with it, but I think overall that we can make the car wash work. The concerns I have are just two of those, one through four that were listed. The first one being the monument sign. My understanding of a monument sign is not a 30 or 40 foot tall sign. My understanding of a monument sign is more of a solid brick sign that's 10 foot tall. So to me, your corridor, we talk about our corridor, we talk about trying to cut out light poles and burying underground utilities, and then we stick a 40 foot pole up with signs on it. Kind of wasted our money on burying utilities as we go. So to me, I, I don't see that the signage being 35 feet would be working for me. I would like to see that reduced down. I don't know if we have any standards that we use for monument signs in other areas that dictate height. I don't know what a good working number is, is it eight, is it 10? Do you have any insight on what we have in other areas?
Yeah, currently, right now, there's, there's no definition on the height for the monument signs, although typically, if you look at other jurisdictions and things, 15 foot is typically the maximum height on a monument sign. Most often, they're between six and eight feet.
Good. That being one of them. The other one is kind of the vagueness of number two. Signage and fountain should not distract from Weatherford's Western heritage. That in itself is a pretty vague statement and can be open to interpretation. And, and they had asked it to be subject to the applicant's continued use of their plan logo. I agree with you, Jeff. I don't think we should necessarily tell a customer what their brand should be or how they can necessarily apply their logo to a building to some degree, but I do think we either needed to vi, either define that fountain and ship that's going out front or discuss if we even want to have that big of a feature out there on our corridor. Outside of those two items, I think, oh, the reader board, the other one was the reader board. What are, do we have regulations on reader boards already?
Yeah, currently, the, the items that you have in red, the strike through and the additions in red is what the applicant wishes to, you to change it to. However, the, the last sentence in item four wouldn't be necessary applicable at all because we already have regulations that cover that, so it wouldn't be necessary.
What are our regulations on reader boards?
There're limited, there's a size limitation to the signs as, as well as how many times the messages can change.
Sure.
Those are the three items that I have concern with. Outside of that, if we can work on that and dial that in, I would be comfortable probably.
So 15 foot on a monument sign?
I would say to go down probably to 10. That's pretty close into, into the corridor.
I'd like to ask the applicant some questions though, because are we talking about keeping the sign that's there and having an additional sign? When I read number four, they want to be able to keep the current sign that's there. Am I reading that correctly?
Well, the current sign's less than 35 feet, so they were wanting to adapt it because it's already wired and everything's in place, and put the bricks in and do it right and still meet that requirement. So they just wanted to change it, to not say you have to take it down, but let them work through it and figure out the best way to do it.
So reducing the height wouldn't be a, a big deal then? You can still leave the poles and if they get electric here?
But that was one of the conditions that came out of P&amp;Z.
I'd like to see the whole thing come down to 10 foot. I'd like to not have the existing signage there at that height.
10 foot when you're on the streets, real low. I understand a 35 is a pretty tall monument sign. The applicant might be amenable to the 15 foot in that range just so they could fit the reader board and everything, so.
What is the size limits scalable on a current reader board?
We probably have to meet the regular requirements.
That's why I'm asking, what are the?
Yeah, the square, there's a square footage requirement that's limited there, which they should. they shouldn't have any problems meeting this...
Like 32 square foot?
I believe it's 32 square feet.
15 seconds on the message, I think.
I believe something like that.
I believe it's something like that.
32 square foot tends to be an eight-by-four. And then you have signage. What would be the limits on the signage on a sign? What is the square foot that we have?
It's based on their frontage on that building, so they'll have significant amount of square footage of signage that they're allowed to have. And so, yeah, really, it comes down to the height, if you condition it at 15-foot, or 10-foot, or that requirement. Because, yeah, typically, a monument sign is... yeah, 15-foot is typically the highest I've ever seen most municipalities go with. A monument sign is the highest, and that's still pretty tall.
And can the current signage be adapted to... as a monument sign?
Right now, the monument sign is not defined as far as heights in the sign regulations currently. And that's why the 35-foot is there, is because the 35 feet is...
Exists already.
It's what exists right there. They're here with a conditional use permit, putting in a car wash here. You have the authority to, in the planning commission, to put recommendations or conditions that are subject to what they're asking and what they're doing on that. And so a limitation on the height is something that you can work out. If they're amenable to 15-foot, or 10-foot, or that. But really, ultimately, it comes down to your ultimate recommendation or condition you place on it.
The four-by-eight reader board is going to be naturally four feet. You probably want it two foot off the ground. That's six foot. And then whatever you add to that would be available for y'all's signage. So...
How big is the chambers?
So 12-foot would probably be... It gives you the same amount below as above. I think 12-foot would probably be a pretty good, solid number.
Do you know how big the chambers is?
The what?
The Chamber of Commerce.
I don't.
It's surprising when you stand next to it how high they are. But 35 is a lot of monument sign.
And I think this needs to be added, Caleb, to our discussion. Put it in your notes. It needs to be part of that discussion over the corridor, because I think...
Yes, we already have that on there.
Just a real quick comment about... on signage. The plan logo, I think, is fairly straightforward. I mean, you see it in the renderings, and it's not huge, the, you know, pirate falls. Applicant, in the rendering you've got in there, they actually, believe it or not, put some bankhead signs on both ends of the building. They're planning on a giant Texas flag, an American flag, of course. But also, they're going to be doing some low-level lighting along the frontage. The textile right-of-way goes all the way up to the sidewalk. But down at the corner of the parking lot, they can put some of the low-level historic-looking signs like you have on... I mean, lights like you have on the bridge. So they're talking about doing that and trying to fit that in, and so they're looking at adding that. But the falls themselves, it's not a fountain. It's two waterfalls with, you know, regular stone. Looks like something central to Texas. It's supposed to be on either side, and the pirate ship's in the middle. So it's not really a fountain with a pirate ship...
Go ahead and continue with our discussion.
Sure. Can I ask one while he's up there?
Sure.
How large is this pirate ship?
It is five feet wide, eight feet long, and three foot tall.
It's not huge. And it's between the two fountains. Waterfalls.
And the waterfall is up close to the building?
Yes.
The waterfalls are on either side of the ship. So they're about...
On the other side of the vacuums.
It's on the road, right?
Correct. Well, it's between the vacuum, in the center of the vacuum, roughly. It is a little bit set back, but...
So the pirate ship is where the white square is?
Where the white squares are.
Okay.
Why does it show the separation of the fountain and then the pirate ship in the back? It's one unit, isn't it? Is the pirate ship in the fountains?
Yes, sir. The kind of artifact, it's not another fabric design. We only have a sketch at it now.
And they're willing to hang a Texas flag off the back of the pirate ship, if that helps?
I will say, for me, I would not encourage trying to cram more signage. So cramming bankhead signs and all this other stuff on the building is just going to clutter it up. And so to me, it's not about trying to tag a whole bunch of stuff to represent heritage. I think the structure itself, the materials used, the design and the structure, all that fitting and flowing with it is important. I'm nervous about the fountain a little bit. I'm not going to lie. I do feel better that the size is smaller than what I anticipated. Me, sorry, me thinking of this pirate ship, I was thinking of a little bit larger structure. So it does make me feel a little better that it's smaller. Do y'all have any issues with a 12-foot sign? Have y'all had... y'all have any concerns with fitting what y'all need on a 12-foot?
If I can find a picture of the sketch, can I bring it up to you?
Sure.
You fine with it?
I'm fine with that. While he's doing that, Matt, did you want to...
Yeah, sure. So just from kind of a high-level perspective, I'm excited anytime a business wants to come to Weatherford, and that's a great thing. And this is a very fine-looking plan from what I can see. So I'm grateful that we have the opportunity to even... to consider this. The concerns that I have is it relates to the corridor again, and maintaining that Western heritage. Kevin brought up some of the points. You know, the waterfall and the pirate ship, I don't see how that contributes to maintaining kind of the Western heritage of the corridor. And, you know, I think it's always this balance. For me, you know, this gentleman owns the property, and I want to be respectful of the fact that he owns the property. But we also are working on carrying out a plan and a vision that was developed by our citizens. And, you know, that includes... This is an important corridor. So I think we need to think long and hard about, you know, some of the things that we allow there. I do have some questions that I want to ask the applicant about, but this may... I don't know if this... I mean, we kind of did that already.
I'm... Go for it.
Okay. Does someone want to come up so they can answer some questions? What would the hours of operation be?
We generally... We would open at eight, and generally from six to seven, you know, depending on the time of year, typically.
And does that mean that there are people... So you're saying 25 full-time employees?
Yeah. There wouldn't be 25 onsite at all times. You know, we're open, you know, 80 to 90 hours a week.
Yeah.
And so those 25 employees get dispersed all that throughout.
Yeah, but there's someone on property during all opening hours?
Absolutely, yes. In fact, our corporate office is here, so the offices, we're going to be occupying there as well. So...
Okay. I think we talked about the lighting. Did I understand it, that it was just going to be on the booms? Is that...
Yeah. It's on the underside of the booms. That's...
Okay. And then, just to clarify, the back, is it... What is the material on the fence?
On the back side?
Yes, sir.
Is that wood?
It's wood.
Yeah, it's wood.
Just a six-foot wood fence? Okay. I mean, obviously, those don't tend to last long, but I'm just asking questions, because I'm curious. What color... That was one of the discussions that came up with P and Z. So what color would the vacuums be? The recommendation was an earth tone, but I know we had kind of talked about... So what color are they?
It's blue, right?
Right now, it's kind of colored blue with our system. And so they make it a tree that's shown on the picture.
Okay, okay. And then, let me just make sure I'm not missing any of the questions. So are the vacuums open 24 hours a day, since they're free?
No. No, we shut the vacuums down. When we're not open, the vacuums, we shut the vacuums down, electricity's down. They can't operate at 3:00 in the morning.
Okay.
We have to have people there.
Okay. So there wouldn't be people there, like you said, vacuuming all hours of the night in different places? Okay. Those are the main questions that I had there, I wanted to hear from you. But my big concerns were the signage, and the fountain, and the pirate ship, and the Western heritage piece of that. Those are a couple of big concerns.
Thank you, sir.
I'm going to unfortunately be the voice of dissension here. I've been here a long time, and as staff, Caleb mentioned, our vision has been a long time in coming, trying to make the... clean the corridor up. And he showed a picture, and I want you to remember back, where we have a beautiful retail shopping center that was a property that was not pretty, that detracted from our corridor. And now we have a retail shopping center that is amazing. And foot traffic is important. Retail, when you get a customer, they want to go from retail shop to retail shop, and maybe dine for lunch, and then go back retail shopping some more. And so I think that retail wants to be around retail, and our economic plan always has been, let's clean that up. Retail is very limited in their hours. Retail, it brings in foot traffic. It was long and hard that it took to get that retail shopping center there, but we waited for the right thing. And I just... I don't think this is the right fit for what we're going for. We have a new building, $15 million building, going up right in downtown, and with buildings that are going all around it that are retail in nature. And that's sort of been our focus, to try to brighten up and help our retail in downtown Fort Worth to make it a friendly, customer-friendly space. And I love car washes. Don't misunderstand me. My Jeep will get washed every week. But I just don't think right there is the place for a car wash. I believe we waited long and hard, and our vision, since the 11 years I've been here, our vision has been to clean Fort Worth Highway up, and to make it more of a retail shopping, dining experience for our customers. And it took us long and hard to get there, but we've started... We started to turn the corner. We started to actually turn the corner, and we can actually see improvement. We can see our vision coming. And I just... I do not believe this is the right use for that property. I think that property could be turned into a wonderful shopping center. And maybe we need to wait and see if that is a possibility. Kevin, I know you have something to say.
No, I mean, well, I always do, but... I agree with you. You and I have been, to some degree, you and I have been on the same page about the corridor a lot. There is a defining point, I think, that I differ a little bit, is I think retail, in a lot of your areas where you look at massive retail growth, some of them outdo themselves with too much retail, and you become too saturated, and a lot of businesses fail because of it. And what you're starting to see in a lot of small retail spaces is a mixture. So you're seeing the nail salon mixed in with the retail. You're seeing, when you start talking to developers, there's a lot of things that are going in that are service-oriented to mix in with retail, because if you over-saturate retail, retail competes too much with retail, and then it drowns itself out. And it's always the last guy there to get in is the one making money, and the first guy is starting to lose. So sometimes, in my opinion, that diversity, I think what makes Weatherford great as a city, is we don't see the bad downturns in oil because we're diversified. We don't see the downturns in just retail because we're diversified. I think the same goes for the business model in some of these areas. And I think a car wash falls more in that service area. There would be a joint use for somebody who was going to retail. So that's just my opinion on that. I wish we were doing this two months from now, when we've had planning and zoning and council and everybody talking about it as a group, to where we had a clear, concise...
Can I add one more quote? One more thing to your... I agree with you, service and retail, but it's that small service that has low... It creates foot traffic, but it has low car impact. That was retail that I'm talking... It can include service and shops that people go to, but I don't get my nails done, but my mother does. So I'm just saying, that's the kind of thing that draws in foot traffic, but doesn't create a lot of cars going through. As I understand it from this young man right here, he services a lot of cars. I mean, which is wonderful. Everyone would love to keep their car clean. But it's the volume of cars I'm talking about, whereas something like a service nail salon, they're going to bring people in, and then, I got my nails done, I'll go to this shop next door. That's the kind of thing I'm thinking. It's low car impact, but it creates a great foot volume for both the businesses that are then coming through the corridor, but also the business we've established around the courthouse and in our downtown area. I think it does... It benefits both the new and the old. Go ahead, Jeff. I apologize.
No, no, you're fine. I was just going to say that this corridor, I mean, each year when we have our retreat, I'm always making that a priority, that I think it was 2010 when the Fort Worth Highway Vision Study got... just before you and I came on council. And that's been a hot topic to me, is to... You know, that's the gateway that most people take into our city. And it's one that those of us that live here get used to seeing every day, because we drive it every day, and you forget how terrible a lot of it looks. And to have somebody willing to put this kind of an investment... I do understand what you're saying about shopping, but I... This isn't, to me, isn't necessarily a car business. It's a service business that... And it's not like a garage where they keep the car. They're in and out. But I can see people going in and dropping their car off and saying, hey, I want to get my car completely cleaned. I'm going to walk across the street and shop a little while, or something of that nature.
It's right next door to the jail, so I mean, if then you just...
But the other thing that I wanted to convey is that the theme of their business that I'm sure they've put a lot of thought and time and money and effort into, there's a lot of places in town that, hey, if they wanted to make the thing look like a pirate ship, we'd probably be all right with. But this is the entry into our city. Like you mentioned, we're about to build a, maybe closer to a $20 million building across the street from it. It's probably going to be the nicest building... Let me back up. I forgot who I'm talking to. One of the nicest buildings in Weatherford. And so we're a little more particular about the branding and the theme in the area coming in. As the city, we're trying to do what we're asking for. That's why we've torn down the old power plant building, the garage, and going to clean that up, and really say, hey, we're doing what we're asking others to do. We're cleaning up the area. I think this building could fit. I think the business could fit. The architecture even seems like it can fit pretty well. The pirate ship is the only thing that I know that some people have had issue with. Did you ever find the picture? Take a look at it?
Absolutely.
It'll be about three foot tall. It'll look similar to that on the side, and it's on the deck. It's not the raised-back part. And then the fountains just come off each side.
Could we queue up some Pirates of the Caribbean?
Troy, is there any way you can...
So this is from the side. So this is similar to what it'd look like, and it doesn't include the back. It's on the deck.
So what was the overall dimensions? You said three...
About five foot wide, eight foot long. And then the waterfalls come off each side. So the ship looks like it's coming through the waterfall on each side.
You know, I could even see a car wash bringing a lot of people into a shopping area that could help the other shops.
And then the waterfalls that come off each side, so the ship looks like it's coming through the water.
May I... Madam Mayor, may I make a note?
Absolutely. Come on.
I was here before on a case involving the corridor. And respectfully, when that corridor... When that building was completed... Am I getting... Get to the right building?
You're headed there.
Am I headed there? No, I'm not. I'm going to go back. Not... Just to make a point, you know how many tenants are in that building today?
One.
Zero?
None.
Yes, there's one. In this building?
Domino's Pizza.
Domino's Pizza.
Yeah, there's one.
Okay.
And there's one other coming.
Which is not a walk-in business. Domino's is not. My point is, respectfully, with a divided, six-lane road, this is not a walking retail area. You pull in, get your nails done, maybe pick up a cell phone, but you won't walk from this place to another place. So this, respectfully, this is not an incompatible use with that. In fact, it's quite compatible by somebody that's in their car, out, running errands...
In fact, it's quite compatible by somebody that's in their car, out, running errands, they'll go. Downtown walkable, retail, in, in my opinion. But that's really not my point is as much as to Mr. Robinson's point, the way respectfully, the way that we change the corridor is not to legislate against things, but it is to encourage people to revive what they're doing to increase the value where that property is no longer has value as a used car lot. And so from, from a developer's standpoint, I would rather see, if I'm gonna look for someplace to go develop a piece of property, I've got those choices, or I can locate next to something that looks like that. And so we can say we don't want stuff. And, and the problem in Weatherford is a lot of these properties have been held by three and four generations. They just keep on doing what granddad did, which is park their old junk cars there. So I think we have to spur development, maybe even do some things that we don't want that are not fully in accordance with the plan in order to get there. We have to go in incremental steps. And that's my, that's my thing about the plan. I'm all in favor of the plan, believe me. But we can't get there by running people like this off that are willing to spend three million dollars because what you're gonna get is five years from now, that site's gonna look exactly the way it does today. Because they keep on officeing there with their corporate headquarters. So I, I just submit we advance the plan by making land so valuable that it makes sense to develop.
Thank you.
That's my little passion there with regard to private development. Sorry.
Let me ask Caleb one, one other question. Staff recommended denial. Can you, can you expound on your reasoning, please?
Right.
Understanding and why you, why you recommended denial?
Right. It, it really came down to the two issues. One has to, in regards to the vacuums that are located in the front. Typically, the car washes that we've seen and approved in, in Weatherford in the past, they're, the, the vacuum booms, which are very similar to what we're, we're proposing here, are, are not parallel with the, the street. They're, 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 and so that was one of the reasoning behind that. Part of it is, is if it does become the high-use area, you know, you wanna show off your car while you're cleaning it out and getting it, getting it all shined up. Typically, everyone throws their doors open on their cars, they're vacuuming it out and, and trash may blow out of those, those doors. They're having it manned. They explained that they're gonna have that manned all the time, so that somewhat takes care of that. But that was one of our main concerns because that just encouraged is the, the vehicle side of things, which was our understanding that that wasn't the highest priority by the council or the citizens in the past. That, that was the one thing. The building itself is beautiful. They, we, we have no, there's, there's nothing, no issues whatsoever as far as that. It's a, it's a great reuse of the existing car wash and a, and a new facade on that. However, the, the other second part of that is, again, came down to the, the pirate ship and the falls in, in front. We understand that it's a logo that, that, that we don't have any problem with on their sign or the wall of their buildings. That's not an, an issue whatsoever. The issue is, 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 you know, you, you put a pirate ship in, in, out in front, you know, that is, does, they explained in the planning commission and, and to you denied that that is part of, part of their logo. However, it really doesn't necessarily fit, again, what our understanding of, of the plan was. And several of you have been here longer than, than I have as far as the implementation of this plan. That really is the only two issues that we saw in that based on, on that. And that was the reason for staff's recommendation of denial. And as you have it, what's before you tonight is that, that the planning, staff recommended denial. However, Planning Commission recommended unanimously, all seven present, to recommend approval with the conditions that were listed.
And I think part of that, too, is just staff trying to figure out where we're at with, without real clear direction, which, which is back to Kevin's point about, you know, we're gonna meet on this and try to, try to get some clarity on that. But, you know, I think that's where that denial comes from, is trying to kind of figure out where we're at in conversations that we've had in these type of situations before.
Correct. We were just basing off of judgment calls of the previous conditional use permits that were on Fort Worth Highway and, and the direction of the, what was actually written in the report and so.
Yeah. I think for me, you know, there, there are trade-offs in life and this is a real-world incident where we have to look at the trade-offs. Maybe it's not, you know, the, the ideal property that we would want, but it's a, from what I can see, it looks to be a great project. It's already, that, that piece of property is already a car wash. So it was already that way. And, you know, maybe some other things could go there, but in the end, I think life's full of trade-offs and this looks to be a nice project. And I, I think we could get there with a few, you know, discussing some more of those concerns. But I know Heidi, you think differently, but that, that's my perspective.
I'm, I'm.
Did you ever end up, Jeff?
No.
Okay. I, I think I'm kind of getting close to where I could make a motion possibly. I did have two items I wanted to talk about real quick, and you brought one of them up, which is the color of the vacuum poles. I think we all felt like P&amp;Z was kind of clear that they were looking at getting something that was more of a whole turn, earth tone. So I think we prob, I personally would like to see it match more of the main color of the building, one of the main colors versus then the accents. So you're matching currently the blue. I'd like to see it match more of the overall general color of the building so that they didn't stand out as much on the side of the road. That would, that would be something that I would, I would be interested in seeing. The other question was I had, it's still back to the pirate ship. You gave me the dimensions on the pirate ship. It was, correct me if I'm wrong, five foot wide, three foot tall, eight foot long is what you said roughly?
Correct.
And it's got fountains that are attached to that.
Waterfalls on each side.
Waterfalls on each side. Do you have any idea of what that footprint looks like size-wise? How big are these falls? How big is the overall?
It usually fits in that center median.
Okay.
In the center of your parking lot.
And that's center median. They don't have dimensions. I got it here. I got it here. I just, I was looking for dimensions. I guess I was, so one of my recommendations was gonna be that we limit the overall size of it to make sure that it didn't grow between now and then. Looking at the picture, I, it's, it's not a full pirate ship. It's kind of, I mean, it's, it's kind of a neat little logo piece that goes with your.
For kids to take pictures, it's in two hands. Your fundraisers are camping logos.
I would, so I would like to see us that we.
That's more American than you get, novels.
Western heritage, I think, is the piece we need to think about, though. Maybe American, but we need to think about the western heritage, too.
And so I, I wanna have a conversation about how we limit that height and the growing of that fountain so we don't end up with some big monstrosity there. It's obviously limited by the space there, but I think if they could arrange those spaces because they're not destined parking spots. So I would say that we put some kind of stipulations that limit the overall size of that structure. Maybe it's just a height limitation or something along those lines, but try to run through the numbers here, see what would, in my mind, would fit. Do you know, do you know overall what your expected height of what the falls are?
If you'll look at the plan, the footprint's smaller than a car.
Yeah.
Maybe that's a good.
The footprint is, but what's to say that it doesn't become a three-tiered fountain that stands up fifteen foot tall or?
Again, it's a waterfall.
Yeah, with, with the, with the side rails of the boat, it would start below that.
So overall, we're looking at less than, we're looking at less than an eight-foot, we're looking less than eight-foot structure.
Sure.
So I, I mean, if, if you guys, I can make a motion now to kind of incorporate some of those if y'all don't have any further topics. I want.
Do you have a height on the monument?
Yeah, I, I do.
I'm having a hard time with, with the western heritage aspect of the waterfall and the pirate ship. It goes back to what I said, life's about trade-offs. I mean, I can get on board with the project. I think it's a beautiful project. And I struggle because I think property owners should be able to do what they want to do on their property as well. So that's my struggle. I just, I don't think a pirate ship and waterfall on 180 fits the western heritage that we're going for on the corridor. That's my opinion.
Got a thought, Jeff? On the ship?
I'm gonna agree with Matt that it doesn't really fit, but the size that it is, does it really take away? I, 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 I don't, I don't know. I, I, I would like to see all the signage that goes in in the future be smaller. That, that one's a bigger issue to me that we bring it down to a, you know, a twelve-foot sign. You know, twelve is a max. And, you know, that, that it's a, a very nice building, that the architecture does match our other buildings. I, I, I think that I see where they've put a real effort into it. I just have a hard time limiting somebody's logo. I mean.
Well, I don't think it's limiting the logo. I mean, this is.
I, I agree. So.
It's definitely not limiting their, I mean, their logo is their logo. I mean, that's gonna go on their buildings, et cetera. And look, I'm not drawing, I'm, I'm not drawing a line in the sand here either, saying I'm not voting, I'm not gonna vote to approve this based on that. I just don't think that fits the western heritage.
I agree with you. I guess I'm, I'm kind of saying the same thing you did. I don't really think it fits either. I just have a hard time telling somebody they can't do it. But I do know that there's been a lot of money spent on, on a plan, that there's been a lot of citizen input that, that has said that they want western heritage in the corridor. And that's, that's the way we've kind of, kind of went, so.
So three, three issues. Vacuums, fountain and ship and the sign, correct? Is that, is that where we're at?
Yes, sir.
That's where y'all are at. And it's not where I'm at, but that is where y'all are at.
Can you come up to the mic, can you come up to the microphone?
But let's, let's continue to, let's get this mapped out.
What I'd like to do is I'd like to go ahead and make a motion.
Okay.
And then we can talk about after that if you wanna amend the motion or if we wanna find a second for it.
Fair enough.
So I will make a motion that we approve the CUP based on the four conditions that was recommended by P&amp;Z with some exceptions being changed. That number two, the signage and foundation, and, and the fountain reflect western heritage, but to be more defined by saying it does not exceed a height of eight foot and it remains within the footprint of the existing drawn island on the plan. Number three, the vacuums, I would like to make, make, make a change that says two things, that each unit is an individual unit that is not connected through piping above.
The piping is under the ground.
Correct. But your picture from your previous store showed it behind that you showed, so I just wanna clarify that. If it is, then it is. But so that the, the vacuums be independent units, they're not connected by piping above, and that they match the, one of the main colors of the building and not the accents. And then number four would be the pole sign. I would like to have that pole sign that's there removed and a monument sign placed that does not exceed twelve feet. And I believe that is it.
Okay, you have to repeat all that. Just kidding, just kidding.
Let, let me ask two questions on your motion, Kevin. The, you're saying you don't wanna see the, the thing connecting the, the vacuums? Or, or do you want them to be individual units? Because modern-day car washes are centralized, the, the power unit's somewhere else that's pulling the vacuum.
Clarify that. All I mean is the initial picture they showed of an existing structure had a PVC pipe that linked between the units.
Yeah, we don't want that. No, it's gonna.
I don't want that. As long as they're individ, they don't have to be, they don't have to be separate functioning units. They just have to be individual pedestals.
Okay. Thank you. And the, the, the sign, as long as it doesn't exceed twelve foot and is a monument, if, if somehow those poles are used for support, is there an issue with that?
No, I mean, I don't mind using the same spot, but that height can't exceed, so those existing poles would have to be brought down and it would need to be a, a masonry-type monument sign.
Okay.
Could you expound on your?
Holy smokes. Can we get a second and then discuss?
Yeah, I'll, I'll second your motion.
I don't know what your, what they're, what y'all are seconding for, so. Could you just reiterate, reiterate the motion, but be more explicit on the thing in the middle footprint?
So I wish everyone could see smiles behind these things, but you can't. So what I'm saying is I don't want that structure to grow. Yes, currently in the picture, it looks smaller than a car and it fits inside that island that exists. But I don't want that island to grow because all of a sudden they decide they want a bigger fountain and so they remove the two parking spots and vacuums on either side. Now they got a bigger area. They end up with a twenty-foot-tall pirate ship that's got six fountain waterfalls and kids riding tubes off of them. So I know that's over the top, but what I'm getting at is I wanna limit it to eight-foot tall in the existing dimensions of the island, the island that they have on their plan that they submitted.
Okay.
And does it need to have a western? Did you say something about a western?
I don't know how you make a pirate ship have a western thing. Maybe have it being pulled by horse. I don't know. But I think that's reaching. I don't think they're gonna get that.
They're cutting horse on the pirate ship.
Okay, I have a motion from Kevin Cleveland and a second from Jeff Robinson. Is there any further discussion?
Nope.
Okay, if you would, vote on your screens now. Next up. Wow. That would be seven A. And that is, thank you. Consider a request for final plat approval for Fox Hollow Phase Six. Thirty-eight lots on nine point two seven nine acres situated in the Sarah Mulch survey, abstract number nine zero six, and the Robert P. Baker survey, abstract number one five oh, City of Weatherford, Parker County, Texas, SBD two zero two zero dash zero zero three zero. Mr. Kent?
Yes. Counsel, you have in, in, in your packet the complete staff report that outlines this request for a thirty lot, eight lot final plat, which is the final phase of the Fox Hollow subdivision. This went, staff recommends approval of this request as, and Planning and Zoning Commission also at their July eighth, 2020 regular meeting, recommended unanimously to approve this plat as, as provided in your packet and the staff report. Any questions?
No.
Any questions?
I'll make the motion that we approve the plat for Fox Hollow Phase Five, the final plat.
Phase Six.
Six. I can't, I, I, I'm not from home, I'm sorry.
That's all good. I'll second.
Um, I have a motion from Jeff Robinson and a second from Matt Tiscus.
Five times fast, five times fast later. Okay, we'll have fun.
Any further discussion? Okay, if you would vote. That passes unanimously four zero. Next up, item seven B. Consider a request for a preliminary plat located at three six eight zero Greenwood Road, described as being six five point nine one zero acres of land situated within the William V D survey, abstract number one one six nine, Parker County, Texas, ZCH two zero two zero dash zero zero seven. Good to see you again.
Yes. All right. This is a preliminary plat located off of Greenwood Road, being sixty-five acres. And they're designed to put in a fifty-three lot, single-family development. And this is their preliminary plat. This was reviewed by staff and you have the complete staff report for this estancia preliminary plat. There were six conditions placed on it by staff with a recommendation of approval. And this went before the Planning Commission at their July eighth meeting, 2020. And the, the Planning and Zoning Commission also recommended unanimously approval with the six conditions as located in your staff report. Any questions?
Any questions? Any discussion?
I'll make a motion with, that we approve with conditions as stated.
A motion from Matt Tiscus and a second from Jeff Robinson. If you would please vote on your screens. That carries unanimously four zero. Next up would be item seven C. Consider a request for final plat approval. Consider a request for final plat approval for the two-lot Harmony Flats Edition located on Harmony Circle and described as 4.518 acres out of the J.M. Bradley survey, abstract 118, in the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the City of Weatherford, Parker County, Texas, SBD 2020-0032. Mr. Kepner?
Counsel, you have before you in your packets the Harmony Flats Edition. As stated in your packet, is a final plat in the ETJ for two lots. There was... Staff recommended approval with the seven conditions that are in the packet listed there. This also went before the Planning Commission at their July 8 meeting, where they also recommended approval. And they added that seventh recommendation or condition that you see there. So, there's seven conditions that are placed on this recommendation of approval from the Planning Commission and from staff. Any questions?
Any questions?
Was that a Gary Baubal condition?
Yes, it is.
He's a good man.
Any further discussion? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion. Go ahead.
Sorry. I have a motion from Jeff Robinson and a second from Matt Tiscus. Any further discussion?
Would the seven conditions...
Summate.
Thank you for that clarification. If you would please vote on your screens. That passes unanimously 4-0. Next up is item 7D. Consider a request for final plat for four lots at 1709 East Bankhead Drive in the City of Weatherford, Texas, Parker County, Texas, SBD 2020-0033.
All right. Counsel, you have before you, this is a request for a four-lot residential subdivision known as White Rock Homes Edition 1 on a five-acre lot. This went before... This was reviewed by staff. You have the complete staff report and recommendation, which includes two conditions. This also went before the Planning and Zoning Commission at their July 8 meeting, where they also unanimously recommended approval of this plat with the two conditions outlined in your staff report. If you have any questions, be glad to answer any.
Any questions? Any discussion?
No.
Do I have a motion? I have a motion by Jeff Robinson and a second by Kevin Cleveland.
With the two conditions.
With the two conditions. Thank you, sir. Any further discussion? If you would please vote on your screen. That passes unanimously 4-0. Up next is item 7E. Consider approval of memorandum of understanding between the City of Weatherford and Weatherford College for a partnership at the Weatherford Parker County Animal Shelter. Mr. Dustin Deal.
Mayor Pro-Tim, council members. Dustin Deal, Director of Municipal and Community Services. Let me pull up my slides real quick. Well, I want to take a minute just to kind of brag a little bit about what we've done down there at the animal shelter here in the last couple of years. And with that, what you have before you is an interlocal agreement that we're requesting approval from council that's going to build a partnership between the City of Weatherford and Weatherford College for shared use of our municipal animal shelter, the new medical center that we're building down there. But before we go into all the benefits of that, I just want to give you a little bit of a background. So, in 2014, the animal shelter did a facility needs assessment to determine what the needs, the future needs, would be for that animal shelter. At that time, one of the things that really rose to the top of the need list is a new medical center. We're working out of a 400-square-foot building right now, a 400-square-foot space right now. So, we were needing and looking to build this facility before the opportunity arose with the college. In 2015, the college started partnering and really volunteering with some of the students down there in our medical location, just with the students there. Moving forward, we knew that we were going to have to fund these expansions that we were looking to make. So, we built the Giving Second Chances Capital Campaign to fund some of those expansions. While working the campaign, the Giving Second Chances Campaign, we discovered an awesome opportunity to further partner with Weatherford College. They had interest in turning their 11-month program for Vet Techs into an associate's degree program that would be a two-year program. So, we really wanted to lean into that opportunity. So, we worked with architects and kind of drafted some plans of what that could look like, and then proceeded forward to awarding the bid in 2020. And then now, we are currently under construction. So, our facility, some of y'all have already seen this. I think most of y'all have seen this building. This is the new medical and surgical center that we are under construction for right now. It's pretty exciting, or at least it is for me. My face is really smiling big right now. You just can't see it. But the floor plan over there to the left is what we've come up with that makes it so that we can work side by side or parallel with the college to allow them to teach their program while we still do all of our normal operations. So, really, it's a very modern medical building designed for a rather innovative conceptual plan here. So, what are the benefits? Why are we doing this? Well, first and foremost, and actually not first and foremost, but this is a very important thing. It enables the college to be able to offer their new associate's degree program. But by doing that, it's going to increase the availability of trained licensed veterinary technicians here locally in our local economy. It's the shared use of this medical center is going to be a cost-effective model. So, what we've been in discussions with the college is it wouldn't necessarily be feasible for them to go and build kennels, build a medical center, hire staff to care for animals, acquire the animals, because those are things that we already do. So, the synergy is already there. For them to start up a program, there's going to be some equipment that they've got to have to be able to teach on, and they want their students to be very fluent in using. Some of that equipment is going to be like your radiology, your X-ray equipment, your dental and cleaning stations, sonography, hematology analyzers, things like that. This equipment, through this partnership, would be available to the city to use to elevate the level of care that we offer to our current residents, the animals there. So, we provide a building, they provide some of the equipment. So, there's already some of those benefits. In addition, the college plans to hire a veterinarian and a vet tech to run the program. I think they've already got that actually in place now. And with that, the veterinarians will... Their veterinarian will work with the students really parallel to us, again, so they can run their whole operation and we can run our whole operation. The college veterinarians will continue... They will end up conducting services or performing services that we already see that needs to be done on those animals, and they'll do so in very humanely. The college veterinarians, LVTs, and students will be able to assist with any of the general health there at the animal shelter, as well as performing additional surgeries in there whenever they're not necessarily teaching. And then finally, the students will receive the hands-on experience that you are not going to receive in a textbook or an online program. This is one of the big benefits that we're able to offer to the college as well. Now, with those same students, they'll be rotating through all the functions of the animal shelter, all but animal control. So, not only just working in the back with all of our medical staff, they'll go... The college is dedicated to making sure that they know how to answer phones properly, that they know how to properly sanitize and clean, they know how to restrain animals. So, we'll be able to use those student labor to really help with other things around the shelter. So, not only will they receive just a good swath of experience, I mean, it's going to be experience with diversity of animals that you're not going to get just in a typical vet clinic either if they were to intern there. And then finally, although there's many other benefits to this, if approved, this partnership will actually be the first of its kind in Texas, if not in the United States. We haven't been able to find another partnership just like this. So, you know, Weatherford Parker County Animal Shelter, I'm proud to say that we've really been leading the industry. But with that, we also have a history of building strong communities. And with this program, the City of Weatherford, Weatherford College, the animals, students, local veterinarians, and Parker County as a whole will all benefit from this partnership. So, with that, I just wanted to brag about that and kind of ask if there's any questions.
I would say you have every right to brag. This is... The whole process is amazing to me. You take something that most of us in government recognize that your scope of work to do it is probably not the most humane way that people would see it done. Your scope of work is to protect the citizens from animals. I mean, that's, you know, control, help control the nuisance of animals. And you've taken that, and you've been very conscious of the fact that that's what the numbers are there for, and that you've taken through volunteers and communities, community interest in that heart there is for those animals. It's not just a black and white governmental thing, even though that's what the government funds piece of it. And you've taken the hearts and pulled at the heartstrings of the people in the community to create a coalition of people that have made this a phenomenal, phenomenal facility. It's better than anything, you know, that I could have imagined it, is the direction it's going. And then you add the relationships you've built onto it with the college, and it's just... It's a great example, in my opinion, of government done right, so...
Yeah. Yeah, well done. I'll say I've had an opportunity to tour, because I'm new to council, to tour many of our facilities in the city. And it's all been impressive and enjoyable and a huge learning experience. But we have a great team across the city of committed professionals who are doing a great job serving behind the scenes. The animal shelter is no exception to that. Do a phenomenal job, and what a great idea. Appreciate that.
I have...
Good job.
Oh, go ahead, Jeff. I'm sorry.
How did you say?
I have one card. Michael Endy. If you could come up, state your name and address. You have three minutes.
My name is Michael Endy. I'm the Vice President of Academics and Student Services at Weatherford College. I live at 1211 Julie Street here in Weatherford. And I just here on behalf of our... So, thank you all for having us here tonight. I'm here on behalf of Dr. Todd Allen Farmer and our Board of Trustees to tell you how thrilled we are with this partnership. And Dustin's given you all the highlights of this deal. But what we can tell you is that we're going to work with our city. We provide our teaching at our location at the college campus. What we can't provide and what no one else that we found in the United States can provide is a partnership where two publicly-supported entities are working together to provide students hand-on activities, hand-on learning with the real animals that they're going to encounter out in the world, not selectively provided to a college or university where they get to pick and choose who they're going to encounter, the people and the animals that they're going to encounter. And that unique opportunity is a tremendous value to our students, to our institution, and obviously to our region and our city. And we're thrilled to be partners in this. It's been a long road and a lot of work to get this far. Dustin and the folks at the shelter have done a fantastic job, and we're just so thrilled to be able to present it to you and hope that you can support it and continue to support it as we grow this program. As of today, we have, I believe, 15 students qualified and ready to begin the classes. We're hoping to get that cohort up to 30 per year. And they'll be able to go out and get jobs in the community in a field where they not only have appropriate training, but they'll be licensed and have passed a certification exam that will allow them to wear anywhere in the state of Texas or hopefully anywhere in the United States, which is what we want, for people to choose to stay here and to work in our community in our area. So, if you have any questions for us from the college, we'd be glad to answer it. Otherwise, thank you for your support for this whole project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to say that any time that we can find ways to partner that's win-win with other entities in the community, I think it's great. And just more kudos to the fact that, you know, the taxpayers do spend some money on the animal shelter, but this new facility was paid for by funds that was raised and wasn't done by the taxpayers. And I think that's another just outstanding thing to be proud of, Dustin. So, thanks for all your hard work.
Yes, thank you, Dustin. I think the entire council appreciates everything that you've done. But more importantly, the animals are getting the best of care, and our students will also receive a wonderful experience in education that they will never be able to replicate and has not been replicated. So, thank you, Dustin, for everything that you do. I have a motion from Kevin Cleveland and a second from Matt Tiscus. That passes unanimously 4-0. Thank y'all very much. Item 7F is discuss and consider nominees for the Texas Municipal League Intergovernmental Risk Pool Board of Trustees election ballot.
Thank you, Madam Pro-Tim, members of the council, James Hotop, City Manager. Just one comment on the last item. Of course, all those successes down there, you know, we attribute it at my level to the leadership in the department from Dustin Deal. I mean, tremendous success. You've seen that organization come a long way in a short time. It's hard to remember back just seven years ago and some of the challenges they were facing and where they're at now and really the successes they've had. So, under our item, the Intergovernmental Risk Pool for TML is comprised of 15-member board, and 12 of those are elected. They serve six-year terms, and they're staggered terms where every two years, there's four of those members that are elected. And so, the item before you tonight is we have the opportunity to provide some nominations for places 1 through 4. And those nominations will just need to be submitted by August 12. And so, we can nominate anyone, whether it be staff or any of the elected officials on the council. And so, if you choose to make a nomination, we just need to get those in by August 12. Those terms actually expire on October 1, and so those nominations will then be submitted out to the rest of the risk pool there. And so, those are all cities that participate in TML as part of their insurance coverage. And so, obviously, we're one of those, so we've got the ability to nominate. So, whether it be tonight in this forum or if you want to submit those separately, we could put for a separate discussion item later on. Typically, through the years, we have not submitted anyone, but we do have the opportunity if that's something the council would wish to do. So, open that up for your discussion and would entertain any questions you have.
Questions?
I guess the only question I have is, is there someone on staff that has the desire to serve on one of these?
So, you know, I think the consideration for staff would either be someone in the HR department or in the city manager's office. And so, Brad and I would both be interested in doing that if the opportunity presented itself, if y'all wanted to nominate us. Obviously, it's a new world, and so, you know, in the past, the majority of those meetings are conducted in person in Austin. And so, you know, we're transitioning to a lot of virtual meetings. And so, you know, that, you know, if there was any nomination there and someone was elected, then, you know, it'd be a modified format. But I would imagine over the course of the six-year term that that's going to trend back to in-person meetings, so there's going to be a small amount of associated costs for some travel. But there are with some other business we conduct where we have to travel to Austin as well, so...
I would say then that it would be hard to do it right now, but maybe if you make a recommendation to a couple of us and we could do that at the next meeting, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
So, is this time-sensitive?
We just need to get in by August 12. So, we'll have at least one other meeting. Our next meeting is scheduled for July 28. And so, the August 12 for submission, we've got time to put that on with consideration at the next meeting if you so choose for that to be the direction.
Didn't you just say that you and Brad would be interested in being nominated?
We certainly would be if that was the direction of the council.
Why do we need to... I'm not being unkind, but why don't we discuss it any further? If they want to be nominated, I say we nominate.
Well, just which position is the only thing. So, I mean, if we want to do it now, I'm great with that, so...
I'm fine with it as well.
Let's say we take action.
Okay.
Roll with the 10.
Okay. So, we have to pick a place to nominate you for?
Uh, let's see here.
Maybe this is why we need to wait until another meeting.
That's what I was saying. Find out which position he was interested in.
I'm the new guy. I should just listen to you and be quiet over here in the corner.
I think you could nominate Brad and I for places 1 and 3.
Then I make that motion.
I'll second it then.
Good job, guys.
I have a motion from Matt Tiscus and a second from Jeff Robinson for nominating James Hotop and Brad Burnett for places 1 and 3. If you would vote on your screens now.
Lesson learned.
It actually worked quite well. It actually worked quite well.
That passes unanimously four zero. Okay, next up is Staff Reports eight A, update on reclaimed water project.
I think you read that wrong. I think it said 15-minute update.
No, no, eight A. You are good to go, Rick Schaefer.
Well, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, council members, Rick Schaefer, Water Utilities. I just had, I really just wanted to briefly congratulate the city council, along with the municipal utility board on being the proud new owners of a TCEQ discharge permit for the reclaimed water project. As I said, this has been, this has been in the works for a long time. You know, overall, this project is, has been thought about, discussed, and in the planning and design phases for well over 10 years. I know we at first were submitting for this permit application right around the time when I first started at the city in 2015, and, and we just have recently been granted that permit. And like I said, it, it was a long process with a lot of back and forth with TCEQ, but we, we finally got that. And, and so city council and utility board now have that. You know, part of the significance of this, particularly for those of you who aren't on the utility board, you know, when we look at our current water supplies, we've got Lake Weatherford, which is our primary source of water. That was built in the 1950s. We've got Sunshine Lake that was actually purchased from the railroad company in the 1930s. And then in the 1990s, we established a contract with Tarrant Regional Water District for us to purchase water from Lake Benbrook. And, and really, all of those, at the time, what they shared in common is the city council was looking ahead and the utility board looking ahead for how do we ensure reliable water supply well into the future? So really, this project here, it, it adds to Weatherford's water supply sources, but it really, it's helping us to ensure reliable water supply well into the future and at a lower cost. So initially, you know, on day one, when this project first goes into operation, it'll provide about 2 million gallons a day of additional water supply. The interim phase of this permit is actually for up to 3 million gallons per day, and ultimately, this will allow us to provide up to 4 and 1/2 million gallons per day. In addition to that, that'll also, this project will also help us maintain a higher lake level elevation as well. The next steps in this project, I would say as soon as we got the permit, we immediately submitted the design plans back down to the Texas Water Development Board for them to do their review process of the design plans. We had those plans basically 100% final design, just ready to go, waiting on this permit. Bill Smith has, has managed those, and so we got those submitted immediately. That's a 45 to 60-day review process from the development board. So we're expecting their comments back by, hopefully by mid-August. We are also concurrently advertising this project for construction now. So we've already advertised that the construction project's being done under three separate contracts. I'll talk about that in the construction schedule here in just a second, but all three of those have already been advertised. We're anticipating a bid opening on August 11th. That's if Texas Water Development Board reviews closer to the 45-day timeline, but we are prepared to push that back probably to September 1st if they take the full 60 days. And then on the construction schedule, we anticipate being able to bring the three construction contracts to the utility board either in August or September, again, pending how long Texas Water Development Board takes for, for review. But we're, we're hoping that puts us around an October timeline for starting construction. Again, that's going to be done in three phases, so the, the pump station and the treatment facility improvements, that's going to be about a 15-month project. And then the pipeline is actually being done in two construction contracts, and those are each about six months, and, and all three of these projects will run concurrently. Last thing that I had on there is just, or the last part of the project is the easements. So far, we have acquired 45 of the easements that we need. We, we do still have a few more that we're still wrapping up. We have written and verbal agreements for two of those, and we're working through a lien holder issue for another one. You know, back towards the end of 2019, the utility board and council had authorized us to move forward with condemnation on several properties. Bill Smith has been working diligently on those, and with those property owners, we've been able to resolve the majority of those. However, we did have four easements that we do still have to move forward with condemnation. It's actually three owners that have those four easements, but, so we are moving forward with that. That's scheduled, or those hearings have been scheduled for September, so we anticipate all of that being wrapped up in the next two months. So with that, again, I just wanted to say congratulations. As I said, we're, we're happy we finally have this permit in hand, so. Any other questions from the council, I'd be happy to answer.
That's really quick. Good job. I so, I don't like to say thank you too many times in one night because I don't believe everybody deserves a trophy, but this is definitely one of those things that does deserve some praise. This project is one of those, one of those projects, when I look back and I see people that created Lake Weatherford, I think, man, those guys had it figured out. Look how far ahead that put us today. And then I look back to the pipeline, it went to Benbrook, and I think, wow, those guys had it figured out. Look where it put us today. This is one of those items, and we actually get to be part of that, where someone in the future is going to be sitting here saying, man, those guys thought ahead, they really put us in a good spot, so. Good job thinking had staff and previous councils before us.
I think it also needs to be said, a big thank you goes out to Sharon Hayes.
Yes.
James Hotop and yourself. That is just some outstanding work for a long time that y'all had the foresight and the dedication to keep going, so thank you all very, very much.
Thank you.
Next line is future agenda items. Does anyone have anything? Ten A is executive session items pursuant to chapter 551, Texas Government Code, VTCs, Opens Meeting Law in accordance with the authority contained in section 551.071, consultation with attorney 111 West IH 20. We will go into executive session at?
Eight oh seven.
Eight oh seven. Okay, we are back from executive session. Item 11A, to take action if necessary pursuant to chapter 551, Texas Government Code, VTCs, Open Meetings Law in accordance with the authority contained in section 551.071, consultation with attorney 111 West IH 20. Any action?
No.
No action. Item 12, citizens on non-agenda items. Is there anybody who would like to speak? I entertain a motion for adjournment.
Don't move.
I have a motion from Matt Tiscus and a second from Kevin Cleveland. If you vote on your screens now. Matt beat you to the punch.
And a job well done to the mayor.
Earned unanimously, four zero. We are adjourned.